It seems good. I think that it's recording this microphone. You can turn it that way, or that way if you'd like to say.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Test. Test. I don't want to be disruptive of the kids playing with the piano. So just give your kids that value, that's recording every sound, every video that might come right there. And there's not the questions that come with all the questions. I'm sorry, but sir. There, there. Still plenty, both sides.
Not again, why are you wearing such prayer?
On May 5th, it was single denial.
Well, on May 17th, it's not needed.
Hey, that's it!
Anyway, let's get started.
Drumroll, please! Mrs. Sisaline class and talk to the hand, come on down for the pledge of school song.
I am the United States to the land of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. From the halls of J.J. Yarres, from the stands that shout success, he thy proffered hisic and always showed respect. To our highest heights we climb, with our golden flag we shine. We are proud to be the zealous achieving excellence.
And the end, Mr. Strugel, our Charlie God, and Suzy Cathy, come on down! Now let's get our alphabet.
Okay, we need to keep this neat. Sorry, please forgive me, no, I'm sorry, I'm really good at keyboard chess.
Okay, why would we do this again?
Well, we need to have the features in the Latin improv production company in the academy.
But this is the academy.
What?
Uh, okay.
Drumroll, please! Now let's get into the pro, come on down!
Alright, we're gonna do a quick introduction. Cameron and Russell, we're ready. Our ninth acting improv actors will be doing some improvisation for you today. If you not know what they're going to be saying, that is the nature of this improv acting. You're going to see the parts. Today, we should be alphabet. We come up with a story. Each subsequent actor has to start their first word with a magic letter on the alphabet. What we need from our audience is a topic for them to make a story up of. So, if they have a hand to read, then they need some topics that are appropriate. Lamborghini's. Sports. Ferrari. Cars. A show. Games. We're gonna get one, we're gonna go over here. Food. Video games. And then, let's try to go with a story about your favorite Lamborghini junk.
Everyone heard of the coolest Lamborghini? But Lamborghini's can not be seen. Cause they... So, everyone knows Lamborghinis are way less better than sports cars. Everyone knows that are way less effective for any normal Lamborghini? Yeah. Girl, really?
Hey Jen, you know a lot Lamborghinis are expensive.
I think they're the perfect price.
Don't get me wrong, Lamborghini's often in those bug colors, but they're way less effective for anybody.
Who all can say Lamborghinis, but Lamborghini's aren't good.
You don't see who all can argue for Lamborghinis. Only that one.
My favorite Lamborghini is sports car.
No one cares about Lamborghinis.
Uh, I do. Quick, tell me what we're talking about here?
Really, you know what we're talking about? It's the same problem, Lamborghini's.
Question, why is everybody's life different?
Really? It's because of the... This stuff.
Sports cars are better. Very effective. Lamborghinis are very effective. Uh, I don't know that they're effective.
And dinosaurs are better than them.
You guys, what were we talking about again? Beer.
What are you doing?
I'm taking pictures of nature. What does it look like actually?
It looks like you're taking pictures of the students.
Right.
We should get actual pictures of landscapes.
Drumroll, please! Davis, Parker, and Franco, come on down!
What's wrong?
We go through one more time, we remember writing.
Well, to cheer you up, let's read some writing.
Okay.
Drumroll.
Please! Lady Macbeth and Eliot and... Come on down!
Ladies, please read it. Teaching home, remembering our words lost in birth. This cloud is black, this is very dark, but it's not visible. When I see the street, I come down, and thought that we should let them all have a baby ahead. While I'm reading grass, there are people eating grass. And my reflection turns around again. But, this year it won't ever be. My emotions follow me up as the leaves of grow in my mind, knowing it will never be seen. Big brown fox was concerned, and rolled up my arms. I've only wanted the street, a sleeping house, and stare at the sun of everything. Big hen's drawn into my house, feeling like a rat's depression. Packed into the trap, dragon wood. I hear my house open, and music rise, it's all peace, but they never did.
The day comes. I am dead, and feel like no one hears me. I don't watch these sports as people, I don't like these stories for pro. I don't like this thing, video games, everyone else. I like trading and magical stuff, and everyone else speaks to their soul. I like the circle in the middle of the town's words, I'm different. And when it's blue, it's a fox, and a fox will chase us together. And I like the light from the moon, the white moon in the sky. I am dead, I am dead, and I'm always wrong. And that's not bad, because he and everyone's dead. You're almost dead, and another person's coming here.
I want to, I'm the one, sweet Lamborghini fox, but then they're all coming together.
Remember to submit your writings to the Valentine Mailbox, and remember, it could be you! Let's help our dog, and it's a cute, cute. What are you doing?
I'm singing a beautiful song, my dog's a violinist.
Let's watch a violin side show, not listen to a violin song.
Okay, but my song is closer, but anyway.
Drumroll, please! Mrs. Johnson's class and Mrs. Adams' class, come on down!
Miss Johnson's and Mrs. Adams' classes stand up, working hard. We have read many articles about issues our environment is facing. The general opinion that harmful effects of plastic, balloon, metal, and even clothes are. They were soft, but from the things we learn. We learn about so many problems our earth is facing. We learn that nature is a fool. Us humans, we fix many of the problems our parents, grandparents, and great grandparents have.
So, Jennifer, did you, did you know that in Hawaii, what is the state that counts as high in health? High in health is going to help every single day? That's right.
We use our research to create vibrant and positive media. We use this choice of order and rules to show equality. It was something that's never been known. It's true.
Hi, my name is Olivia. Hi, my name is Hannah. We are from the art academy. We pick up each other's pieces of rubber to see our future. Our second act, artists of the month are, drum roll, please. From fifth grade, Maddie McLeod, from the fourth grade, Simon and the Cat, from the third grade, The Stevie. Would you also like to share your opinion, our group? Second class, right? I remember all of those young people's ideas, but I have to talk to them, because they're already people. I do really talk about color, doesn't matter if you're a girl or a man, and what is my color? It's amazing, one of my favorite colors in the world. We love to make new stuff, write over the grade four. And tell the backyard. The name of Thor. Thor, and had dragons. The name of Thor had dragons, and that inspired me to be, to draw this dragon. I saw all the. Eaters of the dragon, from the name of Thor, I drew dragon, a dragon, a dragon. I love to play with the dragon tail. We love to tell the story. So we find me. So we find you on the stage, we love to be, we love to be, we love to be alive. So we play with the water, we play with the air. I love. I love the music. I love the music. And I think that's very important, because my experience with music, we have this one, like, my. So, we love, we need to remember, the role of nature, and how, and what you want to do. Drum. Um. I'm playing guitar, so, not like, it looks like someone that plays guitar very well. Well, at least I'm trying. Only I knew someone who could play guitar. Oh, you know. Drum roll, please. Ricky London, come on down. There's a world outside, I don't know where it is anymore. I'm gonna take you to the other side, I'm gonna take you to the other side. Those birds in the sky, that's God's, and you can take me down. And take me down, all those, and gorgeous things, they always got me shaking. All the time, all the noise, I'm now sitting on a table. I can't see, I can't breathe, I'm on a train, and I'm gone. I accept all the things that I can't change. Don't know the dark, the dawn, and I'm gone. It's gonna be alright, alright, so shiny, yeah. There's a world outside, force can be down, force, I can make it. I can make it, take the breath, and take it. Life is strange, and life is good, but it's taking you. But it's taking you, all the things that you said, it's crazy. Always got me shaking. All the time, all the noise, I'm now sitting on a table. I can't see, I can't breathe, I'm on a train, and I'm gone. I accept all the things that I can't change. Don't know the dark, the dawn, and I'm gone. It's gonna be alright, alright, so shiny, yeah. It's gonna be alright, alright, so shiny, yeah. Hey, Alexa, you dropped your pencil.
Thanks, a little off, I'm just helping.
Tell us more, we have a quote book.
Drum roll, please.
Kid, oh, kid, come on down. Rub it. Anybody who heard, you have to move.
I can't leave, you go to the house, or? That was very nice, you should do that better.
Why do I listen to you?
I'm just moving in.
Oops, sorry.
That was very nice, I told you you got to, that was very. It's okay, why do you want to have? It's fine, fine, I'm moving in.
You can make a big change in someone's life, just by any one standing up.
You don't have to be nervous to meet people, like, give them a hand.
Give me a W, W, give me an I, R, give me an I, R, give me a T, T, give me an I and D, I and D. What's the best spell? Great, and force, P, L, L, H, show, roll, please. Ricky London, and Teresa Poritza, come on down. Ricky, three journeys. The moon, why is it there? Does it take care of the night? Does it watch all the animals in light? Does it keep light all the people lying in the bed? Is it dressed after stage of dominators from here, their club? Ricky, the lights are, these very deep questions, look, does it watch all the animals in light? Trey, that, thank you, your reason. The birds are coming to our neighborhood, the trees are on fire, showering with sunshine and water. The trees are dead, they're falling, covered by the leaves, and flowers. While we turn this maiden place, believing our paths of fusions, I follow rock. Had a flashback at one point. They, that's why I was standing at the end, used to be comfortable in smell, but it's making us foggy. Now I'm playing for this, instead of listening to the sound, but it's getting rough. This is my first time, a bird, it's a bird. You guys can make this a lot of great work in the past, like creating raw dishes. Keep submitting, and remember, it could be you. Guess what, guess what, guess what? I have a great question, from Deputy Jack Marshall today. Do you? Good night. With Jeffrey, that's a great one. Well, that's not true. Okay, drum roll, please. Deputy Jack Marshall, come on down. I'm just gonna make a wish, I'm gonna do it. You get started, you can do everything. If you give your name, walk out of the city, and ask the doctor to show you where it is. Your whole response will be all right. To get started, please, welcome, Miss America, and this is my associate, Chris Taylor. This is Michelle, and her friend, please show, please say, we're gonna present this. Actually, come to college last year, and we please, I followed Austin, and she is very interesting. Austin, for the month, we have, Richard Walsh, Ethan, and Taylor. Long getting from the back, and chairs coming, and, you know, this letter. I also want to introduce, our friend, Monica, and she, and she, Dave, who's there, now, in the house, obviously, for us, they don't understand, who are they? Ashley, Sarah, Jacob, and Hannah, and Shay, Chris. Drum roll, you ask each and every question, they will have you listed as the answer, and they have the right to make it up. They have the right to ask, to sit and push it on. The questions will appear in front of you on the screen, so you can hide on your seat. But please do not shout happy, happy, and happy, we're in a dragon race. Alright, we still have, Emily, Chris, Austin, and Kate. What is my mom's part of the third door? I'm first. Alright, you're in first. You need to get there. Why, why not try to set three words? Four. You are four. Okay, you need this question, what is the number of arms? You are four. You may, you may, I'm gonna be so long, I'm gonna be. You are four.
You are four.
Today's last question. Parents face this on the shelf, each way has been passed.
Oh my god, I'm looking at you, I also have a huge problem. We're retiring. Wait, that was my problem. Okay, so what are you putting there?
Well, we won't be here next year, so we'll be found to replace us. Anyone can help reverse us. The board creators, we'll take our jobs.
Yes, awesome idea.
So make your applications by May twenty second. Oh no, you were so fine with our problem, that we almost forgot. Drum roll, please. Jesse and Mary, come on down.
You are a lonesome evening.